Friends of the city council, good evening. All the folks who've come to be with us and everyone who's joining us electronically, we're so glad you're with us. Today is Monday, July 7th at seven o'clock, and this is a regular meeting of the city council, the city of Waverly and the great state of Iowa. We are called to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to us all be together. I've missed you. We've been absent a couple of weeks. If you're keeping score at home, yes, we are down. We only have four council people present, which means anything that's not unanimous does not pass.
No, we need a majority of the people present. Three will pass.
Resolution needs four regardless.
A resolution. Resolution, yes. Thank you. Okay. Which brings us to doing some approvals. The city clerk has put before you an agenda, and I welcome a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve. The agenda is presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, voice vote, please say aye.
Aye.
You have in front of you, again, the city clerk has provided you with minutes from our June 16th regular meeting. I would welcome a motion to approve.
I move to approve the June 16th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? I see none. Voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have with us tonight a guest councilperson for July, who will be Jacob Farren. Did I do it right?
Close enough. Jacob Farren.
Farren. Jacob, my new friend, so you've been in this community for four generations.
Yes, sir.
Tell me about that a little bit.
Absolutely. My great-grandfather was a station master at the Waverly Depot downtown, which is now subcity, back when it was a railroad depot. My great-grandmother, Verna Farren, was a music teacher here in Waverly. My grandfather, David Farren, worked at Nestle as an engineer and a manager there. My grandmother ran a beauty shop, Mary Anne's for Zerlotten, which I think is in the Waverly Hall of Fame for businesses there. They were inducted a couple of years ago. And then my father is Kent Farren, was a shop teacher in Clarksville, and now I've found my way back here. I grew up here in Waverly, graduated from Waverly, did my time in the military, found my way back here, and I'm happy to be here.
We're grateful that you've taken time to be with us, and we welcome your perspective.
Thank you.
We're on item F, number one. We're at public hearings. Friends, this is the date, time, and place of a public hearing on the second reading of ordinance 1170, an ordinance amending the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances of the city of Waverly, Iowa by adding Chapter 100, Section 100.2.04 thereof entitled accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and renumbering the subsequent subsections of Section 100.2 accordingly, and adding related references to ADUs in subsections 100.6.02, 106A.6A.02, 100.7.02, 100.8.02, and 100.9.02. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
To the audience, is there anyone who would like to rise now to make a public comment on 1170? I see no one. This public hearing is declared closed. I'm asking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance 1170, an ordinance amending the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances of the city of Waverly, Iowa by adding Chapter 100, Section 100.2.04 thereof entitled accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and renumbering the subsequent subsections of Section 100.2 accordingly, and adding related references to ADUs in subsections 100.6.02, 100.6A.02, 100.7.02, 108.02, and 100.9.02.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think we'd like, I'd like to point out to anyone who's listening here that this is being mandated by the state legislature. We're required to permit ADUs that fit within our, otherwise our zoning ordinance, so if really something out of our hands, which I am despising frankly, the way that the state legislature is making these decisions for us. The state legislature wanted to make decisions that are impacting things that the city council should be deciding, they should be sitting at this table and not down in Des Moines.
Councilperson Dranko, I agree with you wholeheartedly. These ADUs are small houses, 1,000 square feet, or 50% of the size of the single-family dwelling that's also on the lot. I think, at first glance, this looks like a good idea. You know, this is where Grandma could live, buy the grandkids, have an independent place. That seems sweet, and maybe it'd be great for Clarksville, or Shell Rock, or Ankeny, or Des Moines. It could also be, I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that I see that says this couldn't be student rentals. I don't know. Could this be a camper up on cinder blocks? How many of these do we want on one block or in one neighborhood? I wish that the legislature had given us more time to really think this through and ask citizens more what they want, but the legislature and governor are forcing us to do this against, I think, common sense, and I think this just spits in the face of homeland rule.
How are the, are they assessed by the county? And then how is the taxes?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know that. James, you got that?
I don't know that, sir. That's part of the stuff we're trying to figure out as we move forward. This is all, took effect July 1st, so we're just trying to catch up with the law, get compliant, and then we'll try to dig into what it actually means for us. It's not a separate parcel.
Right.
It's a separate building on that same parcel, so we're not sure how that's going to be.
Well, somebody has to assess it.
Correct. Correct.
I would add to that, this is a dwelling option that my husband and I pursued a few years ago. Our kids were coming back to town, and we looked at the possibility of them purchasing our property and thus building an ADU on the back part of the property, and we thought that was a great idea, and, you know, didn't fit within the building code at that time, and we moved on. So I think the concept of ADU is a growing trend, and it's something that is worth looking at, but I wholeheartedly disagree with the state mandating this.
Any other discussion?
Mayor. Yes, sir.
Please.
I would like to say that I think the concept of these ADUs does provide a lot of opportunity for Waverly, for reasons like you mentioned, multi-generational living. It also offers the opportunity for rental properties, because we are a college town. It also increases property values. It increases gentle density. This is a way for Waverly to grow without changing the look and feel of the neighborhoods. I think there is a lot of opportunity here. It is a recent trend, but this is also a very historic thing. If you look at cities like Savannah, Georgia, with their carriage towns and things like that, this is not an entirely new concept. It has been around for a long time. I think those are great opportunities to look at how those cities have done it and incorporate that, because I do see a lot of opportunity in these ADUs for Waverly.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor. Do I have any more discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. That takes us to 1A, a proposal to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading of ordinance 1170. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the suspension of rules and move directly to the third and final reading of ordinance 1170.
Second.
Any discussion? This oddly is a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? That takes us to 1B, third and final reading of ordinance 1170, an ordinance amending the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances of the city of Waverly, Iowa by adding Chapter 100, Section 100.2.04, therefore entitled, thereof entitled accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and renumbering the subsequent subsections of Section 100.2 accordingly, and adding related references to ADUs in subsections 100.6.02, 100.6A.02, 100.7.02, 100.8.02, and 109.02. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 1170, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any more discussion? Oddly, this will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Dranko?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
That goes a lot faster when there's only four. That passed unanimously. Friends, I'd like to propose a proclamation. City of Waverly proclamation for Welcome Home Day for the Waverly Shield Bantam Company Plant Timeline, whereas, knowing that the history of the greater Waverly area fosters pride in our community, and whereas, the Shield Bantam Company built a new factory in Waverly to build their small truck cranes beginning in 1946, and whereas, a series of companies have built machines in that factory for eight decades since then, and whereas, that facility and the companies that operate there all those years have been an economic and social engine for local communities, and whereas, Waverly and these surrounding communities have long been a source of competent, dependable, and hard-working employees, and whereas, a graphic timeline was lost for a period of years but has now been returned to Waverly where it belongs, and whereas, the residents of the greater Waverly area will now be able, for the first time, to see and appreciate this historic treasure for one day only at the Waverly Civic Center, and whereas, the return of the artwork to Waverly is a shining example of the good that can be done by determined individuals, companies, and organizations working together to accomplish challenging but worthwhile and satisfying goals, and now, therefore, I, Mark Anderson, Mayor, Waverly, Iowa, together with the Waverly City Council, proclaim Sunday, July 20th, 2025, as Welcome Home Day for the Waverly Shield Bantam Plant Timeline, and encourage all residents to make a point of viewing and appreciating this local treasure, once lost but now found. Truly a day to celebrate. This will be adopted on today, the seventh day of July, 2025. So you have a suggested proclamation in front of you. Can I have a motion?
I'll move, go ahead.
I'll move to approve proclamation proclaiming July 20th, 2025, as Welcome Home Day for the Waverly Shield Bantam Company Plant Timeline.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just wondering, Tom Baker is here, has been kind of heading up this project. What time is that going to be available for?
Tom, I'd need you to come up to the lecture so that the cameras can see you and your voice can be heard on the microphones.
It's an open house from noon to three o'clock on the 20th, which is the Sunday of Heritage Days.
I would, I mean, I'm gushing about this thing, because I've kind of been involved in it, but if you've seen it, it is really amazing. If you haven't seen it, you've got to take a couple of minutes to come down here and take a look at it. Seventy-some feet long, what, five feet tall, something like that, and it's a 3D sculpture. It's an amazing thing to see, so take a few minutes and come down here and see it.
And there'll be some side displays and stuff too, tabletop displays from Shield Bantam artifacts, and Coring, and a few companies that were in there over the years, so it'll should be fine. It's a, we've waited 80 years, I guess, for this, so it's, it's nice to have it back. I think a lot of people just figured it was gone, well, a lot of people didn't even know it existed, but, so it's back, and I think we want to share it, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Where does it go after Sunday, July 20th?
Really good question. We're looking for a permanent location for it. Part of the issue was, you know, a 75-foot uninterrupted wall, you know, by doors or windows or anything, so we split it into panels that can be broken up and moved around and everything. That helps a little bit, but still, it's, it's something that, I really, you know, would love to see this as a stepping stone to some sort of shield museum, or, you know, I hate to use the word museum these days, but the Farren people have talked about doing a history pavilion somewhere down the road, but that could be, you know, who knows when. So it really, we have, I mean, the original Bantam Number One is still around. Warburg owns that. It's out at Antique Acres. That would be part of that. They've indicated they would look at that for sure. And there's a lot of stuff around still that, it's really, it's, it's an interesting story for sure, the two Shield brothers started it, and within 10 years, it was the largest manufacturer of small truck cranes in the world, so they kind of put Waverly on the, on the map for us industrially.
Okay.
Hope to see you.
All right, you have a motion and a second in front of you for a proclamation. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? That passed unanimously. Now is time for public comments for anything that is not currently on the agenda. If anyone wants to speak to the council about something not on the agenda, please rise now. I see none. That takes us to item I, the consent calendar. Friends, we haven't met for two weeks, therefore the bills have piled up, the checks in the mail after this meeting, so we have 15 items. Can I have a motion?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Can we please move to approve this consent calendar with removing the, I'm trying to find the number.
That was a roof, right?
Yes, it was for roofing. It's number seven.
Number seven. We'll pull out number seven, please, because we're not quite ready for that. We'll catch up to you next week, or week after next. That brings us down to 14 items. Can I have a motion?
I'd move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
It's on the table. Any discussion?
Golf Course has been busy.
Yeah, well, that's Garrett spending all the money, yep. All right. You appear ready to vote. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. We're on item J, number one. Resolution 2593, a resolution of support and commitment of local matching funds for the 2025 Main Street Iowa Challenge Grant. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-93, a resolution of support and commitment of local matching funds of $5,000 per housing unit for a total commitment of $10,000 for the 2025 Main Street Iowa Challenge Grant application for property located at 123 East Bremer Avenue that is owned by Timothy Loek.
Second.
We're on the table. Any discussion?
East 23 is which building? I'm trying to remember. I should have checked before you.
Beemex.
Okay.
Beemex, okay.
What, it talks about prior support. What would be the example of that? It's maybe before my term.
So we were not asked to support this last time it went through, and it failed, and one of the things that was cited was there was no local support by the city or others. We have done similar-sized support for units with the IEDA grants through housing that you're seeing at Medical Park. We have done a little bit of support, not quite as much, for other Waverly Challenge Grants for the Main Street organization. So we do get into these off and on. Since this was housing-related, we thought it'd be at least a good attempt to get additional housing of a different style, being downtown rental, even though it's not sold, it's still additional housing, as we look through what we're kind of trying to provide. But we have been involved in some of these in the past. We just don't get very many of them. It's a $75,000 grant, and we would only pay this if it's awarded. And again, last time, it did not get awarded. It scored a high, but was not enough to be awarded.
I did attend the Chamber Open House or Open Group that day, and that was voice that people really do want downtown housing. So I think it falls into that very nicely.
I like the idea of leveraging city funds with this grant money and getting something done. I think that's a very good use of our funds.
We were hoping to go with a much larger grant through CBD funds, but federal government has halted that with a lot of the other reductions that are happening, so that is not available right now. So we decided to go forward with this one, with a willing owner, second time trying for this. If that program becomes available next year, depending on what happens at the federal level, we would then, again, try to go after a larger downtown housing grant, similar to what was done a number of years ago, to maybe finish out some of the other upstairs areas that aren't finished for housing, but again, we'll see what next year brings in that.
I'd just like to say, I think it's important for us to do whatever we can to support our downtown business district.
Any more discussion? You appear ready to vote. Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to number two. This is going to be Resolution 2594, a resolution accepting the Harlington Cemetery Monument Restoration as complete, and approving the final payment of, and accepting Phase Number Seven as complete. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-94, a resolution accepting the Harlington Cemetery Monument Restoration Project Phase Number Seven as complete, and approves the final pay request for $10,000 to Mayman Monument Sales of Waverly, Iowa.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Carla, let's have a.
I would say, I'm very much in favor of this, I suppose. Is this something that we're expecting will be an annual expense, or is this going to end at some point?
Well, it will end at some point. Right now, we do have another two years on an agreement with Mayman Monuments, $10,000 each year. Then we'll kind of see where we're at at that point. I mean, we're making a great dent in the older section of this.
Well, as someone, a little bit of a genealogist who'd like to spend time in cemeteries, there's a lot of tombstones that need repair, so I'm glad to see us cleaning up our cemeteries, but I also know that, you know, just you can't stop time and can't stop the earth from moving and pushing these things over, so I don't know if it's something we'll ever be done doing.
Yeah, it's tough to say. For the most part, it's the ones that are really tipped bad, or that have tipped over that, you know, that we're hitting for safety issues of maintenance in there, or just people walking through. So, yeah, I agree. I'm not sure we'll ever be done doing it, but I don't think that we'll be at, you know, $10,000 yearly forever.
Cemetery is 150 years old, is that right?
Right at that, I think the first burial was in the 1860s, in there, right around there, and the city's had it since the 20s, 1920.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? You look like you're ready to vote. Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to item three, which is Resolution 2595. This is a resolution approving change order number two and accepting the Waverly Civic Center Limestone Columns Repair Project as complete, and approving the final payment. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-95, a resolution approving change order number two for an increased amount of $2,935, and accepting the Waverly Civic Center Limestone Columns Repair Project as complete, and approving the final pay request for $25,560 to Mott Construction of Sumner, Iowa.
Second. We'll give that to Julie. And any more discussion?
I just say it, looks really nice.
Yep.
They did a great job. I talked to the guy when he was working out there, and I think it was something that they were trying, not something that they had done a lot of, and it, it looks great, so.
Yeah, and the order increases itself, see, where when they got the columns out, the structures inside had rusted, we had to get them welded in, and braced, and plated, and that's what the increase was, because it's no good if it's not going to maintain itself. But it is solid now, and I think it looks absolutely beautiful. Yep. So it was a good project to get done.
Well, and I will say, we've had good luck with Mott Construction. They've done some good work for us, so.
Yep. You ready? Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That's passed unanimously, which brings us to number four. Now we're at Resolution 2596, a resolution accepting the Memorial Park Concept Plan Revision as complete and approving final payment. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-96, a resolution accepting the Memorial Park Concept Plan Revision as complete and approving final payment in the amount of $392.50 to MSA Professional Services, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Really?
It's a good concept. Just hope, we'll see how long it takes to turn into reality.
Six, seven years.
It's a funding thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, you appear ready to vote. Carla?
Dranko?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to number five, which is Resolution 2592. This is a resolution amending Resolution 2582, awarding contract for the Waverly Aquatic Center, and to provide a change in the contract at Section 6.02 Progress Payments, retaining and approving change order number one. Can I have a motion, please?
I will move approval of Resolution 25-92, a resolution amending Resolution 25-82, awarding contract for the Waverly Aquatic Center, and to provide a change in contract at Section 6.02 Progress Payments Retainage, Paragraph 1A, Page 3 of 8 of the contract to replace 95% with 97% of the value of the work completed, with the balance being retainage, and approving change order number one.
Second. We're on the table. Any discussion?
It's another law that took effect July 1st. The state legislature, retainage can only be charged at 3% now instead of 5%, so we are adjusting this accordingly. This was the simplest way to do it, was a simple resolution to change up the awarding of it, since it was so recently done.
This is, once again, the state dictating how we do things.
Yes, sir.
I hear no more discussion. Let's have a roll call vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item six. This is the second reading of ordinance 1169, reading of ordinance 1169, an ordinance vacating the public right-of-way located adjacent to the intersection of 16th Avenue Southwest and 8th Street Southwest. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance 1169, an ordinance vacating the public right-of-way located adjacent to the intersection of 16th Avenue Southwest and 8th Street Southwest.
Second. Excellent. Any discussion? You've seen this three times.
We've been chipping away at it.
We will eventually pass this thing. All right, roll call vote, Carla?
Myers?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to number seven. This is the first reading of ordinance 1171, an ordinance repealing Chapter 32 of the City Code of Ordinances, Human Equity, and Diversity Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1171, and ordinance repealing Chapter 32 of the City Code of Ordinances, Human Equity, and Diversity Commission.
Item seven fails for lack of a second. Item eight, approval of the mayoral appointments. May I have a motion?[1727.36] May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the appointment of Jacob Farren to be appointed to the Waverly Board of Adjustments to fill a vacancy for a term ending May 1, 2030.
Second. Yep, there it is. Any discussion? You appear ready to vote.
One question, the conflict of interest you wrote, yes?
Yes, sir, we discussed that. Unfortunately, I misread that. That should have been a no.
Okay. That's what I figured.
And almost everyone makes that mistake, actually. I don't know why. Any other discussion? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? You have in front of you, that passed unanimously, you have in front of you, item K, reports from the Housing Commission, the Golf Course Commission, and Waverly Senior Center, calendar. Any discussion, questions of any kind? I hear none. James, does your staff have anything to report?
With you, sir.
First Home Park Playground is now open, so if everyone remembers, that's the one that burned down in October, so it has been replaced. It's open, kids have been playing on it. Looks like they're having a blast. I might even say I've played on it a little bit, checked everything out, so we are still going to have a final inspection. Everything's safe, there's just a couple, a few, a few things that need to be taken care of yet, but we'll get those taken care of. Then, if anyone's driven past the old pool, the pool demo is underway, well underway, so the building's the only thing left standing right now, and they should be getting to that pretty soon.
Just a quick update on the rail trail bridges, construction. They're really close. The decks are done, the fence is up. We're waiting for some brackets on the bottom mounts for the fence posts, the final piece to officially open, so just be mindful of going out there and moving barricades and thinking it's open. It's actually technically not open yet, but it's really close. It should be within weeks. That's all we have tonight, sir.
Are you sure? I thought our law enforcement officer really wanted to give a speech tonight.
She did not.
She did not? Okay. Counsel. Councilperson Bergen.
I will be at the wooden foot for anyone who wants to discuss city council business.
Councilperson Jones.
I'm going to steal your words, Mr. Mayor. Will you really be kind?
Thank you. Councilperson Myers.
Thank you.
Councilperson Dranko.
That's a nice big hole in the ground that we